Welcome, everyone. It's 6:01. Sorry for the delay. We are one minute behind. Welcome to our February 18th City Council meeting. As we do every meeting, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Rory, will you do a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Here.
Michelash.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
And Councilmember Billings is excused.
Yeah, she's not feeling well. She's been sick for a few days. We wish her well. If she's watching, go to bed, rest up. Next, we have our Unified Police Department report and Chief April Morse. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. For the month of January, just a summary of the month. Total cases we had were, or total calls, 2,216. Total cases from those calls, 755. That's about average with what we've seen over the past year. And the officers issued 273 traffic citations. But one case I'd like to highlight for you, one of our DEU detectives or drug enforcement or direct enforcement detectives, he conducted a traffic stop on a car. And this guy, he knows how to find things. So he started kind of digging into the car. The driver provided false information. He was able to make an arrest on that. And meanwhile, while he was working, he called over a canine to do a sniffer on the car. The dog indicated on the car. He continued working on it. And in the car, both occupants of the car had criminal charges and there was narcotics found in the car. So he went back to where they were staying at the hotel in Midvale along the corridor. And he was able to get enough PC for a search warrant. He was able to find four pounds of fentanyl pills, 164 grams of heroin, 27 grams of cocaine, 15 grams of crack cocaine, and approximately $25,000 in US currency was seized. So from a traffic stop and a detective that knows what he's doing, he was able to generate that case. So I just wanted to highlight that for you. That's all I have unless you guys have any questions for me.
No questions, but yeah, thank that officer for us. We appreciate getting all of that off of the street.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Okay, next up, public comments. Any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this point by stepping to the microphone and giving their name for the record. And you will be limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll head over to Council reports. As we said, Councilmember Billings is not feeling well. So moving on to Councilmember Paul Glover.
Nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heidi Robinson.
Thanks, Mayor. First, I just wanted to say to, I saw the call out for artists for the mural fest June 7th. So if you're interested in applying, please do so immediately. We'd love to have some new artists here. And then I would also like to thank the fair for going to Midland Elementary with me today and speaking to the sixth graders about how important public speaking is and how important agendas are and our reporters are and city staff on keeping us on task. So thanks, Mayor, for that.
You're welcome. It was a good time. I wanted to see if we can get that same program in some of the Midvale Elementary schools because it was very interesting and the kids seemed to have a really good time. Next up, Councilmember Brian Brown.
I just have a couple of things. One thing that sort of came to me that I think maybe we should consider, look at, is we opened up the opportunity for third parties to obtain like temporary liquor licenses on public property. And a lot of people were so worried that a lot of bad things were going to happen. I think we should look at, you know, at the beginning of the year, kind of compiling a report to show, hey, there was two or three of them. There was no extra cop calls or something along those lines, at least for a little bit, so people can say, hey, we were responsible when they were used. And that way, you know, if there's a big event that's coming up in the summer, which could happen, we could point backwards to it, right? So they don't get upset or freak out. Like re-remembering every year that they were upset. If we could have some literature, something that shows, hey, no, we did a good job with this. It was good for the city. You know, not spending like a million hours on it, but I just think it would be good to showcase.
Right. Nate, Adam, that should be, I mean, really easy to generate, right?
Yeah, we could put that together really easy. It's super simple. We had, I mean, I could even say we had two. One of them, city-sponsored, one of them, an event that we allowed to have happen. Got no reports from the police that there were any incidents at either of them, both of them on Main Street. So, but we'll put that together annually.
Yeah, because I think it'd be for you guys. If you guys start getting complaints in the summer, it just kind of came to me like, oh, I didn't hear anything, which means I don't think anything happened. So, you know, just, and then we could show them, like, hey, this was a good idea, you know?
For sure. And let's, Nate, let's work on a short summary. And I know this isn't exactly what you're asking for right now, but just for the next City Council meeting. And then we'll just, yeah, we can plan on every, beginning of every calendar year, do a recap of the previous calendar year. Or.
Like spring.
Or fiscal year.
Yeah, or something. I just think the springs, I don't think someone's going to necessarily do one in January, right? So the odds of them ever picking up are the summer. And I feel like if we have a tool to show someone that it's good, just get in front of it, I think that would be good, right? Opposed to just sort of waiting and then, you know, trying to work backwards through it or whatever. You know, I only knew about the one and I only heard good things about it. The, what was it, the Tattoo Festival, right? So just want to think about, you know, trying to always put our best foot forward. And I think that those events do, but we should just have some nice marketing, I guess is probably a good way to look at it. And the second thing is, we should, we should look at our sort of development standards on Center Street, the new, the Joe Morley's replacement townhomes. Like, they look super nice, but their park strip is these like rocks that, that like pile up into the sidewalk and onto the road. And they did these really cheesy two-by-sixes around the trees that are all breaking already. And it just stinks that you have these really nice townhomes, really nice gateway, and somehow the park strip. You know, I was trying to push that they pave it. I, you know, I think on those big roads, you know, eight-foot wide sidewalks are the, are really the key. So I don't know if we can, probably not much we can do for them now, but if you drive by, you'll see a couple are broken and the gutter's usually full of the rocks. And so is the sidewalk, which is just not awesome if people are biking the tracks. So anyways, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Denise Michelash.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say there's some grand openings coming up on Main Street that I'm really excited about. So I hope everyone attends that. And I was there a couple of Sundays ago, walking down, and one of the businesses was having a event and it was packed and it was amazing. And I was excited to see all that excitement happening. So other than that, just attending the planning commission meetings and that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. And for my report, I'll be brief tonight. It is budget season for a lot of the external organizations that I, as mayor, sit on the board. So UPD, UFA, we're in to those sort of budget discussions. UFA board meeting today was interesting. Interesting things to come as far as UFA goes. A lot of time was spent also in UFA today talking about the anti-labor union bill that was passed in the state legislature. And they asked us, in our capacities as elected officials, to reach out to our legislators, if that is an important issue to you, it is to me, just to hopefully make that bill a little more palatable to our unions, especially our police and fire unions and education as well. So I will keep everyone updated as those discussions continue with UPD being our, you know, by and for our biggest line item budget. Just as a reminder, the budget last year was about $14.5 million and we're looking at, obviously, an increase this year. I don't think it's ever gone down. And maybe Kane can tell us if it ever has. But, so we're looking, you know, probably, you know, at least $15 million this year. It's not like the greatest little barrier to break, but I'll keep everyone up to date on that. And you're obviously welcome to join those meetings virtually, listen in on them. There's a public option for that as well. And also, if you guys have any questions, any concerns, anything you want me to take to the UFA or UPD boards, feel free to reach out to me. And just to piggyback off of Councilmember Michelash, yes, there's the grand opening, official ribbon-cutting ceremony. They are open. We ate dinner from there earlier tonight. Senor Pollo. That is on Thursday evening, I believe. So come on out for that. The burrito I had today was about as big as my dog, so pretty good food, good prices as well. Other than that, that's it for me for tonight. And we'll move on to City Manager Matt Dahl.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. One is, as you're well aware, as you mentioned, legislative session continues on. There were a host of bills that were released just as the holiday weekend started and just after, related to homelessness and revenue type issues. Some of the revenue bills are concerning in that they limit the council's ability to make decisions for the city. And then also, of course, we're, as Councilmember Brown brought up, a meeting or two ago, the concern about the mitigation funding and making sure that we're continuing on with that. Right now, the most recent bills look like it's not going to hurt us as bad as we were originally anticipating. But given the fact that there's still bills coming out all the time and it seems like the scarier ones are coming out now, we'll, we'll keep our eyes open and looking at that. We will get you, as there are calls to action that might make sense for you to participate in, we will be setting a clear way to reach out to Councilmember, or to legislators when those bills come out, if there's a big issue. The second thing is just, we have, a few months ago, you guys approved the 7200 South Security Grant Program that was funded through the mitigation funding. Just a quick reminder, that allows for people to apply for up to $20,000 in order to put in new security systems or to repair damage that might have occurred due to transient activity and that sort of thing. And we've had three applications come in. We'll have those completed by the next meeting and give you a full report on what those funds are being used for and who has applied for those. We had indicated to you before that we would follow up in the meeting after those are fully approved and just give you an update on them. So those will be coming at the next meeting. And I think that is all I've got for this evening.
Okay, thank you. And I will say, those business owners were very, very appreciative of that program. So hopefully, we can approve some of that money for them. Next, we do have a public hearing that was noticed for 7:00 PM. So I would entertain a motion from the council to temporarily table that item until 7:00 PM. Or until we, yeah, I guess at least until 7:00 PM. We can move on to the consent agenda.
Is that the number 2025-003? May I move that we table orders number 2025-003?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consider minutes of February 4th, 2025. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
This is a roll call.
Oh, okay. Rory.
Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
And Michelash.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. So we'll move on to our discussion items. And here, his reputation precedes him. We're happy to have him back in Midvale City Hall. Our former city manager, Kane Loder, will give us an update on the Trans Jordan landfill.
There's a seat next to Matt if you're used to sitting on this side.
Not used to seeing him from this angle up here.
That's right.
It's unsettling.
Let's, this one. I'll just switch the screens and we'll just have to click over here to move them. But I'll switch the screens here in a second. Thank you. It's good to be with you today. I'm coming up on my three years. So I think it's April 1st. So from that point on, you can't blame me for anything. It's now Matt's fault for everything. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about the transportation. I've been with the Trans Jordan Board since 1996. That's when I started on the board. So I've been there a long time, been a chair for longer than I can remember also. But it's something that I've really enjoyed and I've enjoyed representing Midvale City on that board for all these years. And we've done a lot, done a lot of good things together. One of the things that we've looked forward to is the new transfer station that we're building in Sandy and getting ready to open that transfer station. 1958, we started together with three other cities, Murray, West Jordan, Sandy, and Midvale all joined together and created a landfill on some property out on the west side, close to U111. Kennicott leased us the property and then we eventually bought the property, started filling up an old ravine out there. It wasn't, it was really, when I started with the, on the landfill board in 96, it was a dump. It was not a landfill, it was a dump. And basically, all we were doing is dumping garbage in a ravine and filling it up. Since that time, in 1996, we actually started trying to run the landfill like a business. And we hired a general manager and turned the landfill into a full subtitle D landfill. That means it has line cells below and above. And so that, we've come a long way since 1958. In 2017, there's been, and through all that time, back in 1996, they actually tried to close the landfill down. We, we had, actually, one city was trying to close the landfill down, South Jordan. We ended up working details out with them and brought them on board and they joined us, along with the cities of Everton and Draper. And so we became a seventh city landfill. And we, we service almost a half million people on the south end of the valley, making us the largest landfill in the state now. And we, annually, we take in about 400,000 tons of garbage. In 2017, with, with putting a, a date that we would end up closing our landfill, which is vastly approaching, we, we decided that we needed another option. And as you know, there was no other options in Salt Lake County to start another landfill. So we started looking out of Salt Lake County and we found, we actually bought into the Bayview landfill down, around, it's not Alberta, Alberta. And bought into the landfill. We now have over 100 years of life for our solid waste program for the south end of the valley. So done some great things working together. And then in 2025, we're going to open our first transfer station. As you're, you know, as I said, in 20, by 2032, we think our landfill's going to be completely filled up. And so we're going to be transferring our waste to the Bayview landfill. Right now, in 2025, as we build the new transfer station, or complete the new transfer station, all of our solid waste, our garbage will go out to Trans Jordan and finish filling up that, that landfill out there. In 2032, we anticipate we're going to have to have another landfill online. So move, let's see. Our new, new transfer station is 44,000 square feet. The footprint's 44,000 square feet. We have a vehicle restriction size of 46 feet, our maximum vehicle length. They, if the vehicle is over 46 feet, we're not going to even try and get them in that facility. We'll turn them at that point, at the transportation, and send them out to Trans Jordan, to landfill. We, I wanted to go over some basics. We do have a tarping policy at the landfill. We are proposing that we keep with that policy and have the same policy at our, at our transfer station. Sandy City did not require a formal permit, in their, in our permit, to have that. But we, we just felt like as a board that we needed to keep that up. And in fact, there's legislation, and I don't know exactly where that's at, but it was moving to the state legislature to require all covered loads to be, to be tarped. And so we're, we're going along with that and supporting that. Here's the, here's the transfer station. You probably have all seen this many times. But we have a lot of access for commercial flow. We're going to have scales. There's going to be a radio frequency ID program. So each one of the vehicles that come in there will have a ID plate on the vehicle. We automatically know the tear weight on that vehicle as it comes in. They're, they're allowed to go through, after they cross our scales, they go right into the, into the facility, dump their load, and then go back out and get a ticket on the way out. So we think that this, this is going to work very well for us. It's going to expedite the, the process very much. And we're not going to have a stack of vehicles down there. And on Saturdays, the transfer station is going to be open for residential customers only. So no commercial customers will be coming in, none of the city routes will be coming in. And all of that will be opened up for residential, which will be a great thing, I think, for Midvale City. And Sandy and Draper and Murray, it's going to be a great facility for them to use on Saturday. I think the residents are going to love it. And it's going to be very easy for them to use. As you can see right there, right alongside of us is the Salt Lake County Hazardous, Household Hazardous Waste Facility. We're partnering with them to, to make sure that we have a full service system there for the residents, so they can drop off their household hazardous waste before they go into the transfer station and then dump the rest of their load. So it's going to be a great, great facility. By the way, if you have any questions along the way, please stop me and I'll be happy to answer them. The transportation total cost, we estimated our, in the beginning, as we started putting our costs together, at $26.5 million. With cost overruns, unforeseen issues like utility relocations, there are so many utilities on that piece of ground. It was shocking to us. We have a 60-inch stormwater facility that runs right through the middle of it. We've had to relocate all those water lines, sewer lines, storm drains, power lines, power poles. And then there've been some additions due to design and engineering changes on the building. So we added, add an extra $3 million to that, to that project, which equates to probably about between 8% and 10% off around on the building, which is not unheard of. But it was very concerning for the board and we have stayed on top of this, asking for monthly reports on this. As you recall, we bonded for $20 million for the project. The board last week approved final budget number of $30 million, if not to exceed on the, on the project. We feel like it's going to come in at about 29.3 or 29.5. But we approved up to 30 million so that they don't have to come back on that. All of those reserve, or all those funds to cut, to cover that cost overrun will come out of our reserve funds at the landfill. So we're not having to raise our tipping rates or anything else to cover that, which is a good thing. But we will have one of the most state-of-the-art facilities in the whole Western United States there in Sandy City, and we're going to be very proud of it. I just put this up. This is the additional manpower that's going to be required for the transfer station. If you look on the bottom right there, our, our current FTEs for the landfill are 41. We're going to, we're proposing to go to 51 employees. A lot of the positions were, that were losing at the landfill due to the fact that our, our tonnage rate will be going down, will be absorbed in our transfer station. But we're going to need an additional 10 employees. And this, this, in our estimation as a board, this is a good, very lean process and very lean organization. And we've done a, I think the board's done a great job at holding our management to, to keeping our costs down now and the end in the future. In order to maximize the transfer station, its capacities and efficiencies, consistent waste stream, 40 East Side cities that comprise about 100,000 tons curbside waste, it was recommended that they haul to its transportation as a designated facility. That was presented to the board last week in our board meeting. The board did not accept that. We voted it down because, actually, it was a split vote, four to three. But I don't think the, for us as cities, I don't think we liked the fact of Trans Jordan telling us what we were going to do. We want to dictate that ourselves. And so we felt a little painted in the corner there with that. So that was not approved. But we do also understand that that waste that's going into that transfer station is very necessary to make that transfer station, that transfer station viable and financially sound. And so it's going to be critical that, that we use that transfer station. Our total cost per ton at the transfer station to handle the waste and haul, the haul contract is $99.25 a ton. But our total cost is $15 a ton. What we're, what we're actually proposing, and the board approved actually last week, is the fact that the landfill will subsidize the Sandy Transfer Station to the tin of $7.50 a ton. So that money is coming, it's, that's, and I might say that one of the main reasons for that is Midvale, is they bid their contract, they found there's a lot of unknowns. We're, we're not, we're not sure that the haulers, and we have ACE here tonight with us, but we're not sure the haulers really understand or really know what the, what the reduced costs are going to be from having to haul to the landfill to now just to short haul to, to the transfer station. And so I think that those costs will be refined over time. But that $7.50 a ton that's going to be subsidized by the, by the landfill actually makes Midvale's contract work. And I know you haven't got that on your agenda to prove tonight, but the other two cities, Draper and Sandy City, that they've analyzed their cost. Draper actually has their own, they have their own haul trucks. And so they do their own waste pickup. Sandy uses ACE or?
Waste Management.
Waste Management, that's right. And they, they just rebid their contract and their contract. So both those cities, it's going to work great for them. As I said, the Trans Jordan Board did not approve the resolution required East Side cities to exclusively haul Sandy transportation. Sandy, Draper, and hopefully Midvale will use Sandy Transfer Station. I think, from the numbers that Glenn shared, I think that makes sense for Midvale to use Sandy Transfer Station. Murray will continue because of their, their contract does not come out for renewal until the end of the year. Murray will continue to direct haul to the Trans Jordan landfill until our solid waste contract is rebid at the end of this year. And I suppose that they will do the same thing. I think Glenn and Uh, I think Glenn and, and Matt did a very wise thing by bidding it two ways, by knowing exactly what those costs are. Uh, and the initial, the initial look at it showed that it was actually cheaper to haul to Trans Jordan than it was to haul to the transfer station or, or total contract. With this price now at seven fifty a ton, it makes our contract in Midvale work. Uh, our projected, uh, tonnage for the landfill, it includes the four cities, which, uh, equate to about a hundred thousand tons of, uh, solid waste a year. And so the, the, the additional hundred thousand tons that we're expecting at the landfill was coming for commercial hauler. Uh, the latest numbers that I received, uh, yesterday from Trans Jordan indicate that the minimum tonnage needed to make, uh, the Sandy transfer station viable and financially sound is a hundred and fifty thousand tons per year. So they've run the numbers again, and, uh, so that, what that means is Murray, we're okay with Murray hauling to, uh, direct hauling to the landfill. Uh, we think that the numbers will still work with the three cities and the commercial rate. And then when Murray bids their transfers, or their solid waste contract, we think that they're, they're actually going to be on a better situation than we were because ACE and, and, uh, Waste Management Republic are going to have, uh, six months, seven months of a year knowing what the impacts are of hauling to the, to the transfer station instead of the landfill. So we think actually, uh, the numbers for Murray are going to be better. I think there's a lot of unknowns, uh, for our haulers that bid on, on our contract here in Midvale, but, uh, I think over time they're going to see that, that it's much better to haul to landfill. I've included some of the pictures. Uh, this is the current, uh, situation of the transfer station. You can see that it's going to be a, a huge facility, but it's also, there's a lot of work to be done in order to get this facility ready to go by this, uh, late spring. Uh, you can see there, they're, they're preparing a floor with rebar. There's actually, I, I believe it's a two-inch lift, lift of concrete they put. So the concrete is, is about a foot thick, but there's a two-inch, uh, lift on the top of this that's called a wear surface. And what happens over time, after all the equipment, front unloaders pushing that, uh, waste around on the tipping floor, uh, wears that concrete out, and then we have to go in, a, a, after a few years, replace the concrete. So we've actually built this facility to have a wear surface on that floor and, which allows us to replace that in sections as it starts to wear out. You can see that there, that they're standing, and you can see the amount of rebar that's in that floor. It's, it's going to be an exceptionally strong, uh, floor or base. Estimated completion date, uh, is May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, one of the scenarios that they gave us last week as a board is they showed us what our tipping fees are going to be. You can see that, uh, the city rate in twenty-twenty-six is twenty-six dollars at the landfill, twenty-six dollars a ton. At the transfer station, it's thirty-three fifty, and that's mainly due to the, the maintenance, the cost to run the transfer station and that nine dollars and twenty-five cents a ton that it costs to transfer that waste out. As you can see, that runs out to twenty-thirty-one, and twenty-thirty-one, all of the, all the tipping fees are balanced. We'll continue to raise our tipping fee at the landfill by a dollar a year. Uh, by twenty, twenty-thirty-one, we'll all pretty much be at the same rate, and we will have another transfer station at, uh, the South Jordan facility. Uh, from there, it's about twenty-five dollars a ton. So when we start turning our trucks from Trans, Sandy transfer station, uh, and hauling to, uh, Bayview in Utah County, it's about twenty-five dollars a ton to haul there. Uh, and we've looked at the analysis, and it's almost exactly the same to haul from South Jordan site to the Bayview. So both of us are going, both sides will be paying the same, uh, for the next, or into the future. Uh, the next step, steps in the transfer station rollout, uh, we're planning an open house. It's going to be VIP, uh, open house and dinner. Uh, we'll invite the employees, of course, and the board members, Sandy City Council, mayor, all members of the city council and mayors. Uh, we're, I think, uh, our, our position is we're going to invite all the mayors, all seven cities. We're not going to exclude the, the West Side mayors. It didn't make any sense to me to do that. Uh, and then we'll also include the Sandy Suburban District Board and their staff along with Solid County and, and then the regulators from the state, New Era. So that's the plan. Uh, we're going to have a soft opening, uh, in mid-June, uh, our large truck rollout, and then the first stage of, is, of the soft opening is member city side loaders. So we'll add a city at a time and start bringing the side loaders in. And then the second stage is to, uh, for all of the member cities in, in their in-house trucks are allowed to dump there also. Uh, full open facility, uh, will happen towards the end of first part of July. Uh, full, full facility open and, and the soft opening will be completed, and then we'll start allowing residential customers to come in. Uh, we will have press releases for the cities, PIOs, to concentrate mainly on the East Side member cities, and then, uh, we'll also update our website and, uh, go through, uh, some public training and try to educate the residents on how they use their transfer station. Our busiest day at the landfill is on Saturdays when all of our residential, uh, customers come out there. We get, actually get customers out onto the road, onto U-111, uh, waiting to get in. We don't foresee, and we think with the number of scales and everything that we have, that we're going to have that problem at the transfer station. Uh, planning for the future, as you can see, uh, we, we need to have another transfer station in our plan. We, we feel like by twenty-twenty-seven that we're going to have to be in the design process. Uh, we're going to have to start building it in twenty-twenty-nine, so it'll be open in, uh, be finished by twenty-thirty-one, and then the landfill closes in twenty-thirty-two when we start, uh, closing up the landfill and, and preparing that for the, the future. We have money put away. Uh, we got five million dollars, I think, in the bank right now that's sitting there for, just for that purpose of closing the landfill and maintaining it for a hundred year. Uh, so we've, we've done a good job at saving money, uh, but more than likely, we're going to be bonding, um, in, in the near future again for that, for that next transfer station. This is a proposed, uh, site plan for the transfer station. One thing with this transfer station is we're not going to need an administration part of it. We're going to use the existing building that we have out there, and we have the public convenience center already out there, so we'll continue to use that. So mainly the transfer station, the enclosed transfer station will be used for a large commercial vehicle. We anticipate that opening again in twenty-thirty-two. Uh, it's going to be a larger facility. Uh, we, our growth, we think, will be on the West Side. So right now, we're, we're pretty much split, two-hundred thousand tons on the East Side, two-hundred thousand tons on the West Side. We expect the West Side, due to their growth out there, is going to, to surpass that. So that transfer station will be a bigger transfer station than the Sandy transfer station. Um, there's a, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was.
I'm sorry.
Firefighters were, they were pretending they got a call. Joking.
I, I hope I haven't just bored you to death. I usually, I'm very good at that. Paul will attest to that. I've, I've been known to, to.
I agree.
I've been known to do complete jazz games, uh, with budget presentations, so, uh, I couldn't figure out why the city council was looking at their phones constantly, but they were getting the scores when the jazz was in the play.
It's been a while.
So the nineties or?
Yeah, it's been a while.
You've been gone a while, huh?
So we're, we're planning on using, uh, cash reserves, uh, to build this new transfer station in South Jordan, and, uh, we also have twenty-five acres of property out there that's going to be very, very valuable land. And, uh, Daybreak, uh, which is the Larry Miller Group, has already, uh, told us that they want first right of refusal on that, so they can develop along with their other Daybreak properties. So we don't think that we'll have any problem selling that ground, and then we'll bond, of course, for the remaining amount. Um, we did build a, a financial model, uh, recently, uh, using, uh, Lewis Young Robertson, and, uh, we built a financial model for the landfill. We update that, uh, on a yearly basis, and it's gone over with a fine-tooth comb by the, our, uh, staff and then presented to the board. We, again, go over it, uh, very tediously to make sure that we're on the right track to, to do the, do what we have to do for solid waste. That is my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Kane? Well, Kane, we want to thank you for your service on the board. I know you've been there for, let's see, twenty-nine years?
Yeah, a long time.
Wow. Yeah, so we appreciate, you know, you being our voice on the Trans Jordan board, and, uh, you know, we know that you have the best interests of not only the entire county, since you represent everyone, but for Midvale City. We absolutely, uh, just enjoy, uh, hearing from you once a year. Uh, we wish you were here more often.
Yeah, yeah, be glad to. I enjoy meeting with you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kane.
Okay, well, surprisingly, it's still not seven o'clock, so we cannot go to the public hearing. Uh, so we will move on to our next discussion items, and, um, sticking with the theme, here to trash talk is.
We are talking trash. Um, a couple points of clarification. Um, we did bid this RFP or request in this RFP that the, uh, providers of proposals bid it with the endpoint of the transfer station and then also what the cost would be to go to the landfill. Um, we did not have, and then when I say we, Trans Jordan board, did not have any solid data, uh, to work that out, so this was good timing to do that. Initially, the transfer station fees were set to be ten dollars a ton higher. Um, those numbers did not pencil out. It would have been cheaper for Midvale to go directly to the landfill. Um, we had some discussions. Uh, the seven fifty-dollar increase at the transfer station versus the landfill does pencil out. We break even or come, come ahead a little, a bit, come, uh-huh, break even or, or we come out a bit, a bit ahead. Uh, the resolution that Kane referred to, um, caught most of the board off guard, um, and the intent was that it would have required the four east side cities, Midvale being one, to go to the transfer station, regardless of the financial impact. If something changes, we would have had to gone there.
Let me ask a question just for clarification. Um, I'm trying to wrap my head around how it could possibly be cheaper to take it fifteen miles away versus right down the street in Seventh West, especially, so.
Right, so.
ACE is a different entity, but like the transfer station and the landfill are owned by the same entity. So, um, what's, briefly, can you just?
Why, why the cost?
Yeah, why would it be, why taking it fifteen miles, would that even remotely be a cheaper option than?
So, we, we got three bids back, um, and each hauler provided two end costs, right? One to go to the landfill, one to go to the transfer station. The average cost cut for the three vendors was twelve percent. Um, so there, there's a twelve percent savings on our haul route, but the tipping fee increase exceeded that twelve percent, um, haul rate cut. Does that make sense?
Well, yes and no. It seems very inefficient to take it fifteen miles versus.
Well, you gotta realize what, what it costs to build the building, and that's.
And, and, and there's, there's processing costs, so we're going to dump, they're going to load bigger trucks and then haul. So that, that's the excess tipping fee costs. Does that help clarify the, the excess cost there?
It's just, it doesn't, I don't think any member of the public hearing that would understand why it would cost more to take it.
To the.
Five miles versus fifteen.
It's the, it's the tipping fee difference. But that has been, that has been remedied so far.
Good.
Um, but again, we were all against the regi, resolution in case that does change. We, we have options. Okay. Is there any more questions on that? Cause, maybe can you pull up the presentation? I dropped it in the wrong folder?
The other thing is, is we're not only just dumping here, it's got to be transferred out of there to another side, whereas if you just take it out directly, they're, they're not going to transfer until they fill it up, right?
Right.
So that's a lot more cost to be able to do that. Now, they, you could have said, well, the tipping fee's going to be the same in both areas, raise the tipping fee out there the same as this, and then you could see a big savings because the trucks don't have to keep running out there. But it takes, it's going to take a lot more fuel to go from here down to Alberta, was it?
Alberta, yeah.
Than it does to take it just out there.
How do I connect, Juan? Oh, just not on this one? Okay. I hope I have the right glasses then. And I'm at the end. All right.
Questions and questions?
Okay, so solid waste handling contract. Um, so for the purpose of costs tonight, I did not include the costs to haul it to the landfill. Um, our intent is to use the transfer station and it pencils out. So just for clarity, all these costs are to go to the, the transfer station. Oh, nice. Okay. So the city's contract for solid waste handling is set to expire June thirtieth. Um, we are ahead of schedule. Uh, thanks Garrett for getting this through, through legal. We tried to, um, provide some extra time because, uh, i-if we were to go to another hauler, there would be ACE picking up cans and a new vendor coming in and dropping off cans, and it would be a, a, a large process, so we wanted to provide time for that. Uh, the city released an RFP in November, and it closed in December. An evaluation committee consisting of the Public Works Director, the Deputy Public Works Director, and the City Treasurer individually rated the proposals. Uh, we, we did not see the pricing, that was just, uh, the, the proposals. Pricing and the scores of the proposals were, were revealed to the committee by the city's procurement officer, um, and ACE's disposal was determined to be the best option. The agreement is for a five-year period with two options to extend. Um, proposals were received from Republic Services, Waste Management, and ACE's disposal. Uh, the, the evaluation criteria, you can see there, qualifications and experience, operational plan, uh, price, which was figured in later, customer service, and quality of submission. Um, Republic Services proposal was missing a number of areas, basically non-responsive, so we're not going to discuss them. Uh, ACE's proposal scored the highest before and after pricing was included, although Waste Management did provide the lowest unit, can I, I'm going to say that, the lowest annual price. You can see the scores there out of a possible six hundred. ACE scored five thirty-two, Waste Management four forty-three. Here is the cost breakdown. So the first can, second can, and recycle can, there, those are the bulk of the cost. Um, I figured out what it would be annually based off of those costs, um, minus recycling processing costs. It's about thirty-eight thousand dollar difference. Um, and then we get into the recycling processing costs, and I think this is where, one of the points where ACE's comes out ahead. We asked for a fifty-fifty percent cost share, excuse me. Which ACE did provide. And for reference, Republic Services did not provide any recycling information at all. Um, with Waste Management, fifty-fifty cost share only applies if the commodity value exceeds processing costs. So ACE is more of a partner in this. They have some skin in the game to try and find recycling avenues. They have some skin in the game to try and find recycling avenues and get those revenues because they're splitting the cost or the revenue with us, where Waste Management is not, which equates to a $20,000 difference annually. So staff is recommending to award ACE the contract despite the cost difference. Their proposal addressed all city requirements, reporting, customer services, they offer routing information, the recycling proposal and cost is more of a partnership and legal will appreciate this. ACE did not request any changes to the draft agreement. Waste Management and Republic Services had a number of requests. ACE is here, Don Beasley. If you would like to ask questions or have a discussion with them.
Any questions for Glenn or for ACE?
Question I have is, we stay with ACE, a lot of the cans are starting to get old and some of them are starting to look pretty, I mean not all, but.
Right.
I know my own recycling can, the lids all cracked and so.
The process would be to call and say you have a damaged can and they will replace that?
They will do it. That's part of the agreement.
Yep. They have a 10-year warranty. After that, they start to go pretty quick.
Well, yeah, they're, I mean, they're getting older is all I'm saying. So there's going to have, there's going to be cans that are going to need to be replaced or repaired or whatever. I just want to make sure that.
That's on the agenda.
We keep the cans looking decent, not all crappy.
And not even just that, like my recycle can's lid is busted off a long, long time ago and then it fills up with water and probably, which is not a lot of fun to have. Like the lid is very important, I found out, you know, once I didn't have a lid anymore.
So I guess what I'm saying too is if we do this, we probably ought to use our public announcements and let our citizens know if your cans are dilapidated or whatever.
Please reach out, yeah.
It's not going to cost you anything to upgrade them and make sure we have good cans.
Good. Any other questions? Sorry, mayor.
No. Thank you. I know I've had conversations with Glenn about this. This has been, what, months?
Yes.
Months long, so appreciate all the hard work and the recommendation. Okay, well, it is still not seven o'clock, so we will go on to our third discussion item. Here not to discuss trash is Mariah Hill, discuss proposed amendments to the fiscal year 2025 general fund.
The good news is, this is probably just about the right amount of time. So I'll preface a few things. I have a little budget amendment information for Denise's information. Lost it there, sorry. So basically what we're doing with the budget amendment is we are making changes to our current fiscal year and we do our best to accurately project everything when we do the original budget, but things change in a year. And one thing of note in this is there is a lot of kind of miniscule changes, you know, things that are $2,000 or something like that, which in a $25 million budget doesn't seem very consequential, but that is mainly because when we were in the fiscal year 25 budget process, our departments cut everything that they could and so that meant when there was even tiny changes, we didn't have cushions built in. So that's why they're kind of the way they are this year. The other thing is that we will do one now and likely just one more to kind of wrap up the fiscal year. That's what we like to do, one after the audit is done and then just one more right before the end of the fiscal year. Maybe one click. Oh, but, no, it's not clicking. Does it ever turn on? Yes, it is on. I can turn it off and back on again. Now, now there's a light, so maybe it will. I did that one. Something weird is happening. You know, I, okay. Whatever. Okay. So here's the other thing. Budget amendments that require the city council's approval are in the general fund. If any of the total budget of a department is changing and then both in enterprise funds or the special revenue funds, which are internal service and RDA, then that's if the total budget of the funding is changing. We do, we are allowed to do administrative budget amendments and that basically is if we're just moving funds between line items and departments. We don't have to come to you guys for that. It happens at the approval of the budget officer, which is Matt. And then city council level budget amendments require a public hearing, which will hold on March 4th before he can adopt it. And the city can pass as many amendments as necessary as long as state code is followed. Like I said, we generally try to do two. So in the general fund, we had an overall increase of $257,000. All of these are one-time expenditures, which were funded by fund balance and the expenditures, you guys have a detail in your packet, but it includes fiscal year 2024 carryovers across departments in the general fund. Those are essentially projects that had one-time funding, they didn't get fully utilized in the previous year, so we're moving those forwards to continue with the projects. We have added a contracted attorney, the new city engineer, this is eligible for one time because it's doubling up on the salary of that to have some overlap with our retiring engineer, some funds for recruitment since we've had some difficulty filling some positions and a part-time seasonal IT intern. And then all the, we have a bunch of other miscellaneous items that are all under $6,000 that totaled to about $20,000 in the general fund.
Mariah, can I interrupt just one second? I'm not sure that the council knows that Keith Ludwig has announced that he's retiring. So if you, I don't know, yeah.
No, none of us know.
Yeah, okay. So that was that. Yeah, I saw, yeah, I was like, oh wait, I don't think they know. So it was pretty recently that he, Matt probably has.
Sorry, the job posting went out? That wasn't, I mean, that's public information now.
Keith said he's going to retire. June, June.
Sorry. In the internal service funds, IT just has one carryover from fiscal year 2024 for infrastructure. And the fleet fund, we have a carryover for a vehicle purchase from the previous year. We didn't previously budget for a vehicle to be purchased for the building official that we did include and then we had some, an engine blow that, so that changed our outside repairs budget significantly. And capital projects, these are all the projects that we're carrying over from fiscal year 2024. This totals to about $2.8 million. I'm not going to read those. In our enterprise funds, we are only affecting change to our water and sewer funds and those are both carryover of master plan projects, the bond proceeds from last year, 5.2 in water and 1.2 in sewer. And that is all.
Questions or comments? We have one more minute, so. Thank you, Mariah. Okay, well now comes the time where we sit awkwardly and wait for the clock to tick one minute to seven o'clock.
Well, I mean, the public hearing starts then, so we can start the presentations early.
Matt, I'm going to wait the 20 seconds at this point, just to cross all Ts and dot all i's.
Do we, do you think we have any other key positions that could retire in the next year or so?
Four seconds. Oh, sorry, I, no, there isn't, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, our next item on the agenda, we have a public hearing scheduled for 7:00 PM tonight and it is 7:00 PM. Consider ordinance number 25003, which adopts a code text amendment to one, modify section 17-7-17 of the Midvale City Municipal Code entitled Transit Oriented Development Overlay Zone, TODO, and two, adjust section 17-2-4 to clarify the definition of the term development. These changes align the zone with state code and clarify when certain activities are not considered development. Vendeline was supposed to present, he is not here tonight, so in his place is Adam.
I'll do my best. Thank you.
You speak German.
What was that?
You speak German.
No, I don't. Sorry. But I'll do my best to move through this. Not German. So again, thank you, mayor and council. This is a code amendment for the TODO or the Transit Oriented Development Overlay. Basically, the main purpose of this amendment is to align the zone with the state code requirements for HTRZs. HTRZ, just as a reminder, is a housing and transit reinvestment zone and they are a state authorized tool that will capture tax increment and then use it to incentivize redevelopment. As a city, we plan on applying for an HTRZ around the Fort Union Track Station. On the slide before you, there are some elements of what's required in an HTRZ. I won't go over all of them, but I will point out that there is a requirement for an affordable housing component. There's also a requirement for mixed use component and then these HTRZs are typically located within a quarter mile of a station. This slide is just brought to you, shown from our recently approved station area plan for the Fort Union Track Station. You'll notice, I'll remind you of the area of stability that exists for all the single family neighborhoods, both around this station and the Center Street Station. And then you'll see north of 7200 South is a concept for redevelopment and many of the changes that are put into the TODO code really kind of came from the recommendations of the station area plan. In looking at this, both the Center Street Station and the Fort Union Station, when we were looking at this for revision, we felt it was very important that there be a mixed use requirement and that that mixed use requirement have a certain geographic area. So for the Center Street Station, this is what's proposed for the mixed use requirement. It's bounded by the tracks line on the west, State Street on the east and then goes about half a block north of Center Street. The area north of Center Street and west of State, a few years ago, was part of a redevelopment plan that has kind of fallen apart, but this is a key area and a prime piece for redevelopment as projects come back in. So we felt it necessary and important to include this in any of the mixed use required areas. Likewise, for the Fort Union area, this is the proposed area of mixed use requirement. It is north and south of 7200, east of I-15 and west of about 180-ish West and High Tech Drive. And then it extends north and south of 72, about a block to a block and a half. So within these mixed use required areas, what we have put in the code is a provision that requires a minimum of 50% of the ground floor area or the footprint of the building to be used for either office, retail or restaurant use. One caveat is any building that fronts on Fort Union, if there's going to be an office use for the mixed use component, it can't front on Fort Union. It either has to be behind or on a second level. So we really want to keep that street face activated with commercial uses that invite pedestrians in and out. So office is not disallowed, it's just not necessarily allowed on the street frontage. And with that, with this mixed use requirement, we're proposing that within the mixed use required area, both around the Center Street Station and the Fort Union Station, that the height limit be increased to up to 10 stories. And then we've specified an unlimited density, but really the height limits that density. So however large or small they propose those units is what their density is, provided they are within that height cap. We've not done anything to change the parking, the parking is remaining as is, so there's no proposed reduction in parking. We felt that that wasn't necessary at this time, that we have, we need the parking requirements as they are. So we didn't, again, we didn't propose any reductions in there.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry, I think you actually already covered this. As far as the affordable housing on this, is this a percentage, just a flat percentage per build or is it scaled?
So the affordable housing comes in what we're calling the incentives. So if there's, so within an HTRZ, a certain amount has to be affordable anyway and so we thought, we will follow that formula, whatever that is. Now, if we're, if you're outside of that and you're outside of that required mixed use area, one of the incentives to go higher and more dense is the provision of affordable housing. So one of the incentives, you'll see a letter I, is a minimum of at least 10% of the dwelling units are deed restricted as affordable housing. So that is outside of those areas if they want to do that. There's also an incentive for additional mixed use outside of those core required mixed use areas and that is reduced from 50% down to 25% of that main level of the main, or that main floor area being a mixed use use. What we're hoping to, that, well, excuse me, we're hoping that this will spur redevelopment north of 7200 South, along that older industrial corridor. We see this as a prime area for redevelopment and more intense and higher density redevelopment. So we're really pushing for mixed use, but outside of that core mixed use area, we're hoping that the incentives will help drive more of that. And then the last slide, this is just the cleaned up definition of development. We've had some projects come forward that there's a requirement for certain provisions, if you will, if development kicks that in and our current definition of development is so inclusive that almost everything qualifies. And so what we're hoping to do with this is narrow that down a little bit and just kind of clean that up, so it's not such a definition monster, if you will. This went to the planning commission at their last meeting. They discussed it back and forth and ultimately recommended approval and so it's here before you tonight. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any clarifying questions for Adam?
Are there any public comments for the planning commission on this?
On, no, there were no public comments on this. The room was full, but they were there for another item. Yeah.
I have some things, but I'd like to wait for the public comment if anybody's commenting.
I'll just have this up here, but as I come back, I can flip back and forth wherever we need, so.
Okay, well, as council member Glover mentioned, this is a public hearing, so I will entertain a motion to open public comment.
I motion, will you open a public comment?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor of entering into public comment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, anyone who wishes to comment on this item, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Luke Maynes. I'm a resident of District 5. I just want to speak in favor of this. I like the proposal for mixed use and high-density housing. I think that's really important, so just want to say I support that, build more in our, more housing and stuff in our area and I don't care about high requirements or parking and stuff like that. I think it's important that we have places that people can live and also go to visit restaurants and things that are nearby, walkable, so that's all.
Thank you, Luke. Would anyone else like to make public comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close public comment.
Motion to close public comment?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, we are out of public comment and council member Glover, if you have some questions.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I went over, I came down and talked to Adam and Ben Dole this afternoon about this. My big problem is the height. You realize that Moda is five stories high, we're going to go double what Moda is and to me, that's, it's not small town Midvale at all. It's, we're pushing the limit of, I think, what we need. I like the idea of the, being able to have commercial on the bottom stores and the whole idea I like, but I hate the height. I will vote against it unless we get down into the seven or eight range. It's just too high for Midvale. We don't have any, the only building we can maybe enclose might be Zion's Bank, the new structure out there and that's set so far back off of the highway that it doesn't look out of place. You put a 10-story building right there by the freeway and it's going to look incredibly tall. I'm not even sure. I'm not even sure, does anybody know how high that Mountain America building is right off of, of freeway? I mean, that thing's huge.
Yeah, I feel like it has to be 10 or somewhere around there.
So that's, that's what we're going to be looking at, and to me, it's, it's just not Midvale. So that's what I'm concerned about, is the height. The rest of it, I'm pretty good. I'm still not happy about parking. They're not changing it, but we have Moda, and it's not working. If we put a better building in, they're even bigger, and we have the same parking, we're going to still have the same problem, yeah. Those are my two concerns.
And Moda, I just think it's a failed project, and they say that they don't have, they have a waiting list for the parking or whatever, but I drive by it every morning, and it's just not, when 20% of the spots are open at 5:00 AM, it's not a, there's not a waitlist for that, right? Like, you know, if it was 5:00 in the afternoon, I would understand that, you know, and so it's hard to judge. I don't want another Moda by any means, and the actual project or something similar. So I empathize with that, and hopefully our rule change that requires the parking to be built in will fix the problems up front for some of it. I don't know if it will or not, we'll find out. I don't mind the idea of eight, you know, stories, to be honest with you. I think, I mean, height doesn't necessarily scare me in some places, especially the 7200 corridor, I feel like it's the only way that we're ever going to make it, not what it is, is to make a dense corridor, essentially from the freeway to state, but eight stories would still be pretty, like you said, very noticeably large.
I like this over idea a lot, but I could also get behind doing the eight, maximum level of eight as well. I'm like Councilmember Brown on that, though, that I'm not sure the density really, or the height really makes me that nervous in that specific area. But if we wanted to take it to eight, I'd be okay with that.
Do we know why 10 was proposed? Since we don't have a building at 10?
I think there were a few reasons. It was a clean break, as well as we've heard from some larger development companies that to make some of these higher-density projects work, they either need like 100 units per acre, up to 10 stories, especially if they're going to do vertical mixed-use. It, it's just a function of the cost, and so we felt, like I said, 10 was a clean break. There's also a height limit of 150 feet, so whereas a story can vary, there is a set cutoff at 150. So if you're at 150 and you're only at eight stories, that's where you're at, regardless of where the 10 is, because the, the feet limit is your cutoff, your ultimate cutoff. So whether it says 10 stories, again, 150 feet is the ultimate cutoff, and that is in the code.
And it has to have, it has to, those are incentive-based too, right? 150 isn't the default.
Yeah, if, if they're not going to do the incentives and they're outside of that required core area, then their limit is five stories.
We, two other, four or five other things. The, the first is, I looked it up quick on the, on the Mountain America website, it says it was 11 stories is how tall that, that building is, in Sandy. The second thing is, there had been a meeting with the council where a developer had proposed a project on the north side of 7200 South, it was a.
It's Park, Park, whatever.
Yeah, the hotel. Yeah, and at the time, the council had indicated, clearly not everyone had said it, but there was a general sort of sense that if there was mixed-use involved, that there was less concern about the height. I think 10 stories was even sort of mentioned at that time. Now, we haven't come back, I guess, and like, sort of said, did you mean that when you said it? But, but that is also something that was kind of giving us a signal that, that this is something that would be worked, totally understand what everyone is saying, but at that time, there was the sense that if that vertical, if that mixed-use component was there, then there was an openness to going taller.
Is there a map of the TODO again? Can we pull it up?
So the TODO right now, we could pull it up, but this, again, I'll just show this for the 7200 South area. Not all of this is Zone TODO. The only area that is currently TODO, is there a pointer on here? Is it this one? Okay. The only area that's currently Zoned TODO right now, obviously the, this project, the Moda project, and then over here, you did approve one, but it does not have a mixed-use component, and I know that was a source of friction, if you will, when that was approved, because, whoa, what did I just do? I don't know what I did. But I remember, I remember the council asked, is there a way to require mixed-use with this project? And at the time, the current code did not require it, and so this one would.
The other thing is, we have that property where they just tore down, I don't know what building that was, right there behind Motel 6 in that area, in Moda.
Yes, that is outside of any of this.
They couldn't build this in, next to those houses and stuff.
And it looks like there's not really any other place at Midvale, so it's me, I guess, if they hit the incentives, I'm less worried about the story height now. I normally am, because there's other, we have, what, three track stations, right? So I don't necessarily want to think that there'll be 10 stories next to all the track stations, but.
Yeah, the Bingham Junction one, I believe right now they can go up to seven.
They can? All right.
No one's done it, but they could.
I didn't know that.
Now, when you say they can go up to seven, what's the height, the actual?
There isn't a height limit currently, so that's why we threw that in there, because under our definition of story, we don't have a minimum or a maximum, because those can be flexible. Yeah, so usually like on a main level, let's say if you're activating the street, that story could be, you know, 12, 15 feet high, and then your livable stories could be, you know, down to nine, if you, so. But we did recognize that there might not be an appetite for, I don't want to say unlimited heights, so we did put that cutoff in there of 150.
Well, in my personal view, I would, I would like not have anything over five-story, period, in Midvale. I mean, that's, that's my personal opinion, but I will go a little higher in this particular area, but I, 10 stories is just, for me, is just too, too high.
I think we have a, isn't the old Veritas headquarters six stories? Which is on the edge of Midvale.
Six or seven, I can't remember.
Six or seven, so we have it already at that height. Not saying what you're saying isn't valid, but we do have at least a few six-story, there's the two of them right there, and then the, the little one in between, I think, is five. So we do have some height. I, I think it's hard, it's going to be hard with this legislators to always try to make that pitch when I-15 and 215, and the line runs right, right there, but we can always try, you know.
As far as a building goes in Midvale where people are living, five right now is, five stories is the highest that we have, and that's on Center Street and Moda as well, both of those are five stories.
Yeah, for livable, yeah, you're right.
Any other clarifying questions, comments from the council?
I do want to just let you know, we don't have any active applications at this time, so we don't have anyone asking for 10 or eight. It's just, we're hoping that this can spur some redevelopment and attract some, some redevelopment to come into some of these areas, and so that's really another push for this. It's, no one's, no one has an application that we're waiting on with this.
Is the UDOT sand pit whatever part in, in this?
No, that's out of it. It just, it's a little to the east, but they could, now, they could apply for a TODO, and with the incentives get it, but they're out of the requirement, they're out of the required area, but they're just a little to the east.
Just want that to go away one day.
Yeah, so someone could come in, and if they, if they provide those incentives, I think they, it would be amenable to think about it.
Is there a time limit on the deed restriction as far as getting that?
Not in the code, I believe that could be worked out as the development moves through.
I would just hate to see someone take advantage of the incentives, have it for a year or two, and then, nope, no more.
I believe that could be clarified with any kind of development agreement as well, because again, these are for zone changes. Yeah, much of the TODO doesn't currently exist, and it only exists when you approve it, and so we're just providing some tools for when those requests come to you, you can look at it and say, okay, well, this makes sense in this area, or this does not, and if it does, these are some of the requirements, and these are some of the incentives that could be offered. But again, it's, it's on a rezone application basis, and those all, those will have to come before you as the council.
Okay, last chance, any other questions, comments, concerns? Adam, would you mind putting the motion back up?
I just won't go so fast, shut it down.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the board, if anyone would like to make said motion.
I'll make the motion. I move that we approve Ordinance Number 2025-O-03, which adopts a Code Text Amendment to modify Section 17-7-17 of the Midvale City Municipal Code entitled Transit Oriented Development Overlay Zone, TODO, and adjusts Section 17-2-4 to clarify the definition of the term "development" with the finding in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, will you call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Mikkulash.
Yes.
And Glover.
No.
Okay, that passes three to one. And that is, since we jumbled up our agenda a bit, that is it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We really missed out on having the mayor vote on, on that one.
Okay, is there a second for the motion?
Second, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned from City Council, and now do we need a minute or two to go into the RDA? We're just good to go. Okay, well, welcome, everyone. We're still here. We have our Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City meeting, February 18th, 2025. We will start, as we always do, with a roll call.
Yes, Board Member Glover.
Here.
Mikkulash.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
And Robinson.
Here.
And Board Member Billings is excused.
Thank you, Rory. Public comments, anyone wishing to comment on any item not on the agenda or for a public hearing may address the Redevelopment Agency by stepping to the microphone now, stating your name, you'll have three minutes. Are there any public comments for the Redevelopment Agency? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have one thing to consider tonight, consider the minutes of December 3rd, 2024.
Mayor, I motion, will we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Rory, will you call the roll?
Board Member Mikkulash.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
And Robinson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Moving on, we have one discussion item for tonight, and that is to, oh, this looks familiar, Mariah Hill, discuss budget amendments to the fiscal year 2025 Redevelopment Agency Budget. Oh, hey, it says Mariah Hill on here.
Yeah, you didn't misread that, it is Mariah Hill.
Cody, go for it.
Cousin Cody stepping in for Mariah. Thank you, RDA Board, thank you, Mayor. So just running over some RDA budget amendments that we'd like to discuss. As always, when we look at our budget amendments, when we look at our budget, we want to think of our mission, vision, and values for the RDA. Our vision is to enhance Midvale City's unique culture, identity, and community spirit. Our mission is to improve Midvale City through strengthening housing, shaping economic growth, and implementing Midvale City's general plan, and our values are transparent, engaged, integrity, community collaboration, commitment to city goals of housing, beautification, historical preservation, and commitment to responsible growth. And just kind of as a side note, I've been thinking about how to measure economic success, success in economic development, and seeing that Midvale, we're doing, I think, very, we're very successful in economic development in, in two terms, I would say, in terms of the numbers, just seeing that our property taxes are increasing, our taxable sales are increasing, and that's great, that's really important, but another thing that economic development can do is, is enhance community development and place-making, and I really feel that, that we're having a lot of success there, especially in the Main Street area. So along that note, most of the amendments to the budget are carryovers from, from the budget-moving line item expenditures and revenues forward, and then other ones focus on Main Street programs that we are increasing the budgets for. So our RDA Operations Funds, we are bringing on an attorney, Tom Dally, and we have made some budget for that, and with our Bingham Junction, I think we're really blessed to have Bingham Junction as a project area that brings in the revenue, because with our Main Street, to really jumpstart the growth, so this is the first year that we're actually collecting tax increment from Main Street area, the RDA is going to pull in about $650,000 our first year, and then 60% of that we'll keep, 40% of that will disperse back to the taxing entities. So this is the first year that we've actually collected tax increment revenue from it, but we've been spending money there for about four years, five years, and we've been able to do that because of where you've been borrowing from the Bingham Junction project area with the promise that we will repay the Bingham Junction project area, and so that's been fantastic, because we haven't had to bond or, you know, borrow from a traditional lender, but we've been able to borrow internally, and we will pay that back. And so transfer the Main Street project area, we're proposing an increase in that, and also an increase in the public art, the City Hall project as well. Jordan Bluffs, those are carryovers, and then the attorney, and then Main Street, an increase in the, the revolving loan program, his expenditures, and an increase in the project area improvement, which includes the, the lighting project and facade projects. And so those are the, the budget amendments that we're proposing. So if you have any questions.
Thank you, Cody. Any questions for Cody?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We do not have a closed session tonight, so I will.